We'll bring our regular city council meeting to order. It's Monday, February 18th, 2013, 7:00 PM. If there's anyone present who may require a special assistance to participate at this public meeting, please let us know and we'll try to assist you. Roll call?
Mayor Pedder?
Here.
Councilmember Crum?
Here.
Councilmember Fauch?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
And Councilmember Lefebvre?
Here.
Okay, are there any amendments or removals tonight's agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda tonight with the removal of Agenda Item Number 10. Two reasons. One is my understanding we still have not had legal review and comment. And two, I haven't had a chance to review it myself.
I'll second that.
Does anybody have any questions or comments on this?
Randy, did you share with everybody the legal opinion on that?
I think we've all got that.
It looked like only you and I were having a copy of it on that original, unless it's been disseminated, otherwise.
Okay, I know what you guys talked about. I thought somebody had talked to me about it.
That was me.
So I hadn't forwarded it to anybody, no, and I haven't found another attorney.
I hadn't either, for that reason, because it was only us that were dressed on it. Yeah, I think we need to talk about that, how we want to do that. That's one way of keeping that on the agenda, and I wish to get this out there, what we're going to do about getting that in.
And I was going to mention it at the end, but I'm looking for additional representations. Are you going to talk about it at the end? Any other questions or comments on that? Okay, I have a motion in a second to approve tonight's agenda with the deletion of Agenda Item 10 at this time. Councilmember Crum?
Aye.
Councilmember Fauch?
Aye.
And Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
And Councilmember Lefebvre?
Aye.
Tonight's agenda has been approved with deletion of Agenda Item Number 10. Agenda Item Number 5 is approve the consent agenda. This is the approval of the minutes of the February 4th, 2013, regular city council meeting. Set date of Monday, March 4th, 2013. We have a public hearing at 6:45, and our regular city council meeting will immediately follow that public hearing. Approved claims register, and building permits were approved for Carrie Vaughn and Matt Busing, and for Andy Oost.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Councilmember Crum?
Aye.
Fauch?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
And Lefebvre?
Aye.
Tonight's consent agenda has been approved. Agenda Item Number 6, approve the purchase of the copier for City Hall with the price increase. That went above what we had originally stated. They did give us another option here this time for one that's five pages per minute less in printing, which is basically about $50 higher than what the other one was. And I talked to Marilyn, and, other than like printing out of budget and stuff, we don't print a lot of constant pages, so she didn't see that the five pages per minute was less than less, or would harm us unless you guys think.
All the features. All the other features seem to be the same.
Yep, everything else.
The page per minute?
Yep. Yeah, the maintenance agreement was the same, held the same amount of paper, had the same network controls, same fax, data, everything, so.
Do we have to calculate the percentage increase on that?
It was $800, so, yeah, it was well above. That was a random machine that they were, had a special limited time on, so.
What happened with that? It appears that we possibly had to approve getting those numbers up when those bids were going to came out?
I would have to look back. I haven't looked back. I know we got the bids, and the email we received said that she had told us it was for a limited time, but I don't know if it was budgeted for last year. I'll have to go back and try and look through the minutes and everything, so.
Last year was a promotion on that machine, introducing the new model, and that's why it went up so much.
We had it usually low, and now we've got a normal increase on it. Again, my question was, did it seem like we had already discussed and talked about when we got those bids, and I thought we approved getting it then? Do you remember why we didn't get it?
It was put in the budget in July, July 1st.
Was it just a budget discussion?
That's what I'm thinking too, but I have gone back to look at the last year's minutes or anything, so.
Can you have Marilyn go for it? What did you say? Yeah? So I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of Monir MP 2352 SP digital imaging system for $2,925.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Crum?
Aye.
Fauch?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
And Lefebvre?
Aye.
Okay, approval for the new copier. Agenda Item Number 7, let's discuss it on a proposal of job offer for City Clerk.
Can I back up? Just a second before we move on. How quickly will we get that copier? Is there any expectation? I'll assume we might have that.
She said a few days. She would, after she ordered it, would just take a few days.
Could be this weekend. Great.
Probably will have it next week. I called it.
Sorry.
Nope, that's all right. Okay, discussion on proposal of job offer for City Clerk. Last meeting you had made a proposal that we ought to offer her the job.
I went back and looked at, I went back and looked at some of the, obviously what we put out, the pay range for the job posting, which was a $17 to $25 pay range, looked at what we paid in the past, where we currently were with Edra, with Bess, Angela, Marilyn. I would propose that we get approval to extend an offer to her for the $17 bottom of this scale that we originally posted.
I'll second that motion.
That's actually a proposal, not a motion, correct? Because, yeah, but even like last time, proposal, proposal is not a motion, and so really, we don't have anything out there right now as far as, you know, we need to remake all motions and everything.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we extend an offer to Vicki Schroeder with the amount of $17 an hour for the City Clerk Administrator position, beginning as soon as she's available.
And I'm again, will second it.
I just wanted to make just a couple of comments. One, first off, I'm a little disappointed that the council didn't take the recommendation of the Personnel Committee to offer the position to Marilyn for the, for the, for the open role that we have. We have seven applicants. Of those, five, and by the way, we thank the people that were the applicants. We had, we had a lot of interest, and they're all big people. But basically, out of the seven applicants, we have five that had no previous city municipality experience. We had two that had previous experience. One withdrew, took their name out of contention, and the other one, under the circumstances, just wasn't going to work. Therefore, it was a decision of the Personnel Committee, looking at trying to get experience, was to offer it to Marilyn, who has, in essence, been doing the job, has experience prior to Angela leaving, actually has done some, if not most, or all of the job we're asking the new person to do, whoever we hire, and I just feel that that is the right decision coming out of the Personnel Committee. I know that we've had, well, I don't want to set ourselves up as a community as well for potential another lawsuit, because we're not hiring the most qualified candidate. I think we have the most qualified candidate, and I think we could be challenged on that. So I would wholeheartedly, and I've never had the pleasure of meeting Ms. Schroeder, I would wholeheartedly interview her through the Personnel Committee to replace Marilyn in her current role, but again, I feel that Marilyn's the most qualified.
I'm at a little loss of how we can hire somebody that isn't qualified, and who's going to train this person that isn't qualified? Angela? Marilyn? Can't have Angela do it, and Marilyn's, we don't want her to have the job, so who's gonna train the new person? I mean, I'm at a loss of why we're doing what we're doing. It's not right.
Well, I respect your opinions standing by. I believe that Vicki is the most qualified person. The Personnel Committee did interview her at the time. Randy, at the advice of some citizens elected to make some changes to the Personnel Committee, so that was done, but at that point in time, Personnel Committee simply makes a recommendation to the council. The council is still left to make up its own mind, each member to decide on who would be the best and the most appropriate person. I think Vicki is an excellent candidate, okay? Not to put anything down of what Marilyn's done, or all the effort she's taken, don't mean to put that down at all, but we're looking for a second employee to fill the administrator position, and we have been put, and part of the reasoning Randy expressed at the time of making the changes to the Personnel Committee was that it was dragging on so long. I resent some of those remarks, in that that was the statement made, and it was directed to the members that, the changes that were made, Nick and I being somehow pointed out as maybe stalling or delaying the effort to have a clerk, additional person brought on board, which is not the case and not the truth. Okay? So in an effort to move the ball forward and to get this done, we had interviewed Vicki back in August, September, you know, September, October, something in that timeframe. It's been a long time since we initially started those interviews. At the time, she was by far the most, I felt, the most qualified candidate, and I think others did as well, as the vote last week indicated. We are way behind in bringing her on board and getting forward and pass this. As far as the threat and risk of a lawsuit, I tread very carefully on any comments I make in that regard because of the current situation we're in, but I think that's in good hands, and I'm not going to let that stall us and put us off from moving forward with the city's work, and that's basically what's been done. And I regret that I've allowed it to even happen that long, and I'm glad the council has taken the position to move forward and get Vicki on board, and I think Marilyn and each of us can do our part in helping Vicki come feel welcome, come onboard, and be trained and pick up her duties. All right, we're connecting this up here.
We'll allow everybody a chance later on, okay? And then we'll have plenty of time to talk. As far as talking about dragging it out, yes, I did say that, and I also said I was as much at fault as anybody else, so I didn't point just two people out, or anything. I said it was also my fault. As far as being, making my decision because of what somebody in the community said, that is not true either. If I was doing everything that these people had asked me all this time, there'd be a lot of other things that I've already done, would have done, that they're mad at me for too, because I haven't done some things. When I'm here, I make up my own mind, and I do what I think is best for this city, and that's what I have done for as long as I have ever been on any committee here. As far as being the mayor, when I was on City Council, I do what I think is best for this whole town and every person in it. I have a little problem with this. I mean, I couldn't remember, I know that last year, when we had hired Angela, I don't even remember what she started at, but it seems like it wasn't much above that, and she had eight years' experience. I was thinking that when we put out this year's pay ra, pay range, it was less than that, but I could be wrong. I don't remember what it was that we'd set out, and.
Does it give you a $2 increase to pay on the minutes? The far right figure? Did you double down there? Does that help? Does that bring out more flesh than that?
Yeah, I remember this. This was when we hired Angela, correct?
Correct.
Correct. You know, I haven't, you know, this was at that time. I know that we were kind of doing it to help her out, and it could be, I just, somebody that doesn't have any city experience starting them, I'm not saying that that's not a decent wage, I mean, that's a good wage, but when we've got the experience here, and somebody that's been doing this for a year and a half, and she's making less, and she's going to have to train her to do things, I just, that doesn't make sense to me either. I know that usually your, your higher ranked person would make more money, but I just don't see starting at that kind of wage when there is no city experience there.
What do you recommend?
I recommend we hire Marilyn.
Who's going to train this new girl?
I think just as Marilyn is. Just as Marilyn's needed assistance with the financials and the different applications on the computer, and we've brought people in, and we'll continue to have to do that. That'll be part of the training. There'll be clerk school, there'll be numerous opportunities that anybody new would probably have to go through. Marilyn as well, still needs those opportunities. She forego, forego an opportunity to go to clerk school because we are down a person.
Not by choice.
Have we checked references? Do we have references back? Okay, I'd like to see the references as they come back, or are they are back?
I haven't seen them yet, so. Are there any other comments or questions? Do you have any?
I do have the references.
I should go get a yolk on this, I should, yes.
I'm just not comfortable with having to hire somebody that isn't qualified, and then we're not having Marilyn do the job. It's just, it's just not right.
Again, I mean, you know, you've got the references. I'd like to see them before we make a final decision. You know, I don't know that they would be not good, or I would hope that you would have changed your mind, but that's definitely up to you guys. Skip has suggested $17, so again, like I think that would be a little bit on the high side. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I have a motion in a second to offer Vicki Schroeder the job at $17 an hour, correct?
Can we make that contingent on references? I think we should, to be, to be, you know, responsible here. You're asking us to vote on something, and we haven't seen the references, and don't know anything about it, so. Actually, haven't even interviewed her yet.
Personnel, he did.
But you didn't make it.
Hold on, everyone. Let us, let us conduct this up here, and we'll have you come up later, please.
That was my question. Why didn't you, why didn't you make a motion back in August or September?
I was prepared to, Mike. That was, when we completed the interviews of the people that were available at the time, I was totally prepared to. I, I made my preference. You weren't here the last meeting, so you didn't hear the discussion, the comments that were made at that time, but I, I can, I resent Danny's remarks that she's unqualified. I believe she is the most qualified, so we can agree to disagree on that point.
She's the most qualified.
Most qualified candidate that was an applicant through this process.
Councilmember Crum?
No way.
Councilmember Fauch?
Aye.
Councilmembers Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Lefebvre?
Aye.
He didn't have that, so hopefully we can see that soon. Agenda Item Number 8 is update on EMA 911 meeting. I attended this about two weeks ago, voted on their budget. They basically took about a 2.5% increase on wages, and they added a little bit on one of them for some new equipment, but it shouldn't change if they're asking much. I just wanted to update you on that. Their public hearing is tomorrow morning at 9:00 at the Law Enforcement Center, and after that, they'll, they'll approve their budgets, so. But there wasn't anything stood out. They kept most everything in line with what they'd asked for last year, so. Does anybody have any other questions on EMA 911? Okay, last Wednesday, I attended a landfill meeting. We currently have an agreement with them. This is bill, two of the water bills every month. Last year was talk of possibly this year getting to maybe ask for not quite as much money out of that assessment. At the last meeting, most of the cities, or the representatives, were in favor of leaving that on there. I would be in favor of leaving that on there. That was to build up the capital fund that we have. The other night, we approved purchase of a new piece of equipment out there. They've got a trash compactor that, we were just dumping tons of money into, on repairs. One bill, one month, was $30,000, and it was just getting to the point where it was month after month. That capital fund purchase was $250,000, so it basically wiped out the capital funding, so this is up to you guys. If you want me to go back and vote differently to ask them to reduce that, we could, but with future land purchases in sight and other equipment needs, as will be necessary, I think we ought to at least stay with it for another year where we're at. If we were to ask them to lower it, if all the other cities decided to lower it, you know, if we had to buy another piece of equipment, and had to borrow the money to assess, we would have to go back up, and then we usually run into more negativity when you're raising assessments than if you're keeping them the same, so.
What was it dealing the rest of the, you know, for?
The one town that was really against it was Whitbine. Most of the other towns, with their representatives that were there, said that they preferred to keep it on there, but they were also taking it back to their councils, so.
So that piece of equipment, that compactor, did out of commission, or is it repaired? Is it sunk off?
It's, it's working. They got a $50,000 trade on it. The piece of equipment was still 250,000 after the 50,000 trade-in. That's, they're a pretty specialized piece of equipment. They're not anything you can just go buy, so they tried to try and find used ones out for the canyon and find good used ones, so.
And this is to stave off additional land, having to reject additional land? Is that the idea of mine, the compactor?
Yeah, yes, but they said that when they bought the last one, in the first two years, it saved seven years on the landfill, so definitely helps us. So unless you don't want me to, I will go back and vote that we keep that on there. The next meeting is, you know, we could, if you change your mind, just let me know for the next meeting, we'll put it back on the agenda, but otherwise, we're all in favor of leaving it on there. The second Wednesday in Marish. Yes, we would have another regular meeting before then, so. So at this time, we'll just plan to vote that way, unless somebody lets me know, we'll put it back on the next agenda to discuss it. Agenda Item Number 11 is approve Class C liquor and Sunday sales license for the Beaver Hut Pub, and I believe all the information has come through, correct, Marilyn?
I make a motion to approve the Class C liquor and Sunday sales license for the Beaver Hut Pub. I'll second it.
Any questions or comments? Motion in a second. Councilmember Crum?
Aye.
Fauch?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
And Lefebvre?
Aye.
Class C liquor and Sunday sales license for your hut has been approved. Agenda Item Number 12, citizens' questions and comments. Judy?
Can I just stand here? I'd feel better.
Please, you can come up here, let's hear everything here again. I guess I just want to know if Mike and Dennis interviewed this new hire? Did you interview them, her? So you've not met her?
No.
How come when we hired a new police officer, Skip required to be able to meet him before he was hired, but you don't have that opportunity to meet her before she hired? I don't understand how that works, that you have no idea who this, I won't say you don't have any idea, but I remember that, I was here. He requested to meet the new hire, but you guys don't have that opportunity, evidently. Marilyn, thank you so much. I'm just gonna say I'm keeping this city running with very little appreciation, but we appreciate it. Thank you.
John Espinmeller, 414 North Third Avenue, United States of America, July 31st, 1948, I've noticed some odd behavior since before Christmas, or a little after Christmas. I noticed that when Councilman Fauch comes in, he removes his coat. I noticed that Dennis Crum removes his coat, Mayor Fetter removes his coat, but yet Mr. Lefebvre and Mr. Johnson do not. I just have a question for you two. Are you carrying a concealed weapon or not? Yes or no? Yes or no?
It's none of your business.
Yes, it is my business, because I want to know whether or not I am. Yes, it is my business, because I wanna know whether or not I am threatened sitting out here in this audience, and if the rest of the people out here are threatened. It is our business. This is public property, and we have a right to know. Yes or no? That's exactly the type of response I expected from you. I'll take that as a yes. You two are cowards.
I guess on the new administrator's position, I would just like to maybe just address this towards Nick. Just, Nick, can you give me one specific attribute of the new administrator that you feel that she's the most qualified candidate? I mean, just one, just one thing that, over the looking of the background, and I assume the background check was done, right? Is it, what's your, what stands out the most on, on this person for that position? What do you think that, what's, in your mind, what's the most positive attribute for that person?
It's not on the agenda.
What?
It's a question.
And we talked about the, yeah, the city clerk position that you just voted on. I just was curious what you thought was the, the most glaring positive attribute for that person? What would that be?
Should have thrown the background, the background of government work.
Dee, what do you think? What stands out the most in your mind for, for hiring this person for this position?
She's very good with people. She's friendly, outgoing.
What do you think, Skip? From what you've looked at your background information, what would be the number one thing that would gravitate you to her as the position holder?
I think she has the leadership skills to basically step into that position under the environment that she would be coming in under and be able to move forward with it in spite of all the political nature that is being presented.
Does the fact that the additional training costs that might be incurred, is that something that, a consideration of yours as to how much that would come out of the city coffers to pay for that? Do you feel that was...
I addressed that earlier.
And you felt that was acceptable, acceptable amount, that we're probably gonna have to incur for the training?
I addressed that earlier, Terry, and I voted. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
I am offended, you know, first of all, the gentleman back here who said that about whether the city councilmen up here are caring or not, first of all, they do not have to let you know they're caring or not. I may be caring, I may not be. If I am, I am qualified. I have a license to carry. It is my Second Amendment right to carry. And if there is a problem with that, please let me know. I'll be more than happy to have a conversation with you, sir. Anyway, City Councilman Fauch, I do have a question for you. Thank you for showing up. Last two out of three city council meetings, you have failed to show up. I wanted to talk to you. I'm hoping that you have dropped, or you do have a right for the resolution on the, whatever you proposed on the carrying for, on city property, just like I have a right to stand up here and confront you and ask you to drop the resolution. I'm hoping that you do consider dropping this. Thank you very much.
Okay, I have been looking for an attorney on playing phone tag. They've been in, in and out of meetings. Right now, City Attorney Rodenberg has withdrawn from two items. He has withdrawn from, due to conflict of interest, from the City of Logan versus Johnson case and from the proposed animal ordinance. So, I am looking to get an attorney for the City of Logan versus Johnson case first. Once I have somebody lined up, I will call a special meeting, Zed's date's coming quick, so we can approve that attorney. And then, once I have that one done, I will, if the city council still requests, I will look for another attorney for the others, so.
Do we need to approve that? Is that something that's gonna point to?
We've got to approve it. It needs to be approved as an appointment for that, that case. So, once that happens, we will have to have a special meeting to appoint that, so.
So, are we going to appoint a new city attorney period? Is that what we're saying?
This would be for this case at this time. That would be a discussion for you guys on an agenda item later on, if you wanted to do that, so.
I would suggest we need to talk about that. I get kinda conflicted. I don't know how I feel about our city attorney defending individuals on council versus the city itself. We should be able to go ahead and...
Mike, I'm gonna grab the other mic, so.
It is my feeling he should be able to go ahead and continue on with the prosecution against councilmembers, because he's, he's on the city side, and we pay him from the city to do that. And so, he, in essence, is refusing to do his job, and so, I just assumed get an attorney that does his job. He or she does his job.
Have you talked to him about that?
No.
I haven't either, and I have a challenge doing that, as you can imagine. So, yes, I would encourage each council member to ask that question and give an answer to that. I'm unable to understand the valid, valid question.
So, I think we should do that, Randy, and I think that we should put it on the agenda for next time to discuss, you know, the city attorney in general.
Well, that, and once I, like I said, once I have somebody lined up, I'll email everybody on a special meeting, and we're gonna post it, so we can get that approved, so.
Making motion to adjourn?
Motion and a second to adjourn, Councilmember Crum.
Aye.
Fauch.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
And Lefebvre.
Aye.